Madam Clerk, we're going to call the meeting in order. I see we have two public speakers for a closed session. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay. Is there any other cards? I have two here. Is there any other cards available?
We do not have any other cards.
Okay. Thank you very much. We're going to call the first speaker, Mr. Tim Johnson.
Good evening. Happy Voting Day to everyone. I'm sure everyone's already voted, but you should have a handout before you. This is on with regards to homeless lawsuits. The first page is part of the settlement before Judge Carter where the county indicates that they're not to transport folks across SPA lines, which is a reminder we're in the central SPA. I have it highlighted there for you. The second page is an RPA that I received from OCSD literally an hour ago that I went through and highlighted in red areas that I expunged all the areas that were in Santa Ana. But these are folks that were picked up in, for example, Mission Viejo, the OCSD transported to Santa Ana in the first place, from Orange to the Courtyard, from HB, which is inside the SPA. But as I've spoken before, I believe that this is not just a SPA issue, but also a Santa Ana issue. The other cities need to be stepping up. Lake Forest to the Armory, it says in Anaheim, but I think we can all agree that there's no Armory in Anaheim, so it's either in Fullerton or here in Santa Ana. Regardless, they've crossed lines. Mission Viejo, it's nice to see, and that one that they actually provided a taxi, suggested a taxi. And a couple of these others that I expunged because they were prior to the July 2019 settlement date, they were offering Ubers, which I thought was nice. So that's information that hopefully you find when we want proof of what's happening. This is part of that proof. And again, I literally got it just an hour or two ago. That's why I'm a little out of breath from hustling here after doing some quick computer work for you. Next page is a current pocket guide that's available on the county's website. You'll notice that in the north SPA that it has two Santa Ana shelters. These are pocket guides that are given out to and are available on almost every city's website indicating that our Santa Ana shelters they're handing out to their north SPA. You'll notice the next page is our central one, and it does not indicate any of the homeless shelters in the north or the one in the south. The south pocket guide, you'll notice, has, again, the Santa Ana shelters on there, Hospitality House and Courtyard. And again, these are government documents that are being handed out to folks that are supposedly wanting help. And so when we are asked to give proof to the courts or to others about information about the county transporting across county lines, I think this is pretty helpful. The last page is just a sampling of some of the city websites that have these particular pocket guides on their websites that you can find even as of today. So hopefully you find this information helpful and your own council is getting more for you. Thanks a lot.
Thank you, sir. Next speaker, Mr. Dale Helvick.
Good evening, Mayor, Protown and council members and staff. I just wanted to update the council on the possible spreading of inaccurate information and reports of intimidation that our volunteers, as well as paid referendum signature gatherers, said they experienced during the referendum process. I've been provided a picture of a man at Target who was reported to be telling volunteers, as well as paid signature gatherers, in a manner they told me they found intimidating, that it was illegal to gather signatures on the day of Monday, February 24th. I also personally observed the same gentleman who was in the picture inquiring about the number of referendum signatures being sent over to the register of voters when I was at City Hall on Tuesday, February 25th. I've never met the man seen in the picture or at City Hall, but was told his name was Ernie Condi. If that is correct, he may be a retired Santa Ana police officer presently employed by the Police Officers Association. If so, I find the potential connection between the POA and this developer curious. If this is Mr. Condi, and he is an employee of the POA, I ask that council members to inquire into why someone from the POA might be interested in spreading apparent inaccurate information regarding the deadline for gathering of referendum signatures by the POA's citizen constituents on a vineyard development proposal at 2525 Main Street. Of course, if this is not true, please let me know at once. Let me be clear on one other point as well. In all, 18,995 signatures from Santa Ana residents from all across the city were obtained. While this effort may have started in Park Santiago, it has grown to include support from many Santa Ana neighborhoods: Artesia Pilar, Bristol Memory Coalition, Bristol Warner, Edna Park, Casa de Santiago Fisher Park, Floral Park, French Park, Henninger Park, Mayberry Park, Meredith Parkway, Mid-City, Morrison Park, River View, Sandpoint, South Coast Metro, Thornton Park, Washington Square, Wilshire Square, and Windsor Village North, to name a few. While over 13,000 signatures were gathered by residents of Santa Ana, yes, we did hire a company to assist us in the final week. However, contrary to more inaccurate information that I understood is being spread, it was paid for by the residents of Santa Ana and their volunteer supporters, not the POA or any other politically elected individual. This service was paid by the City of Santa Ana resident donations, such as a 93-year-old resident who drove to my house to ensure I got his $25 contribution. These people care about the City of Santa Ana. We did what was expected of us as described in an email from the city. Quote, "The deadline of filing the referendum petition is Monday, February 24th before 5:00 p.m. [connect the dots, people."
Thank you, Mr. Helvick. Any other speakers, Madam Clerk?
No.
If not, we're going to go ahead and move into a closed session.
Lord God, as we begin this night, we ask that your presence would give us guidance. We ask that wisdom would be displayed. We're thankful for our city council members, our mayor, and all that serve our community, Lord God. We're thankful for the first responders. We always ask for blessing and protection upon them, Lord God, and favor for this city. And Lord, even though we're on the West Coast, we're mindful this night of Nashville, the difficulties they've been through, and we intercede on their behalf that you would bring peace and comfort to a city that suffered a lot last night through the storms. And Lord, we're thankful again for the people to be honored this night, those that have served our community. Bless them, Lord God. And again, we thank you in the name of the Lord. Amen.
Councilor Iglesias to do the first presentation to the NAACP, please. If you could step forward.
Good evening, everyone. Did you guys go out and vote? Yes? Okay. Okay. So I have the honor of recognizing outstanding individuals in our community. And also, you know, nationally, the month of February is always Black History Month. And I want to thank you all for everything that you do for our community. And I want to apologize for not bringing you in February, but we brought you the first meeting here in March, to acknowledge everything that you do for our community and what you continue to do to fight for civil rights here for our residents. So with me, I have Dr. Fred Cahoon. He's the president of Orange County NAACP. If you could raise your hand. We have Mr., I call him Brother Wellington Bennett. He's the vice president. Here it comes. Gloria Miller, treasurer. Janice Cahoon, member. And Joyce Mays, who's assistant secretary. The Orange County NAACP branch, number 1052, serves Santa Ana and works to ensure the political, educational, social, and economic equality of rights of all people. Most importantly, they seek to eliminate race-based discrimination. The NAACP of Orange County reaches out to community colleagues, attends court hearings, hosts residence forums, assists with voter registration, and provides legal classes once a month. And I believe the meetings are at the Second Baptist Church. Yes, it's on 17th Westminster, right? Okay. And in celebration of Juneteenth, the OC NAACP hosts an annual event, which brings together a diverse group of people to enjoy food, entertainment, games, singing, dancing, and all-around great time. So the presence of the NAACP in our community is essential to promoting equality and celebrating our diversity. So I just want to thank all of you guys for supporting Santa Ana, and we are grateful to have you here and grateful also for your efforts, what you do for our community. So at this time, I would like to give this to Dr. Cahoon, representing the organization. And if you have any words that you want to share with us, feel free. Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Now, I feel like I'm coming home to some extent because right out of college, the City of Santa Ana hired me, and I worked at the Corbin Center. And I'm not going to tell you how long ago, but I have, I'm going to say this, excuse my grammar, but it was a few many years ago. So we're here to help the people of Orange County, to provide justice and equal opportunity for them. And we want to encourage as many of you as possible to come by and see what we are doing. We appreciate you, and we thank you for this award.
Hello, everybody. It's nice to be here today. I don't have much to say. Dr. Fred Cahoon already said everything, but we're just glad that you all invited us here today, and we're going to continue to do as much as we can to make the community better. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Appreciate it.
Councilor Mitch Sarmiento, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And that was a great presentation. Thank you, council member. I know on the eve of Black History Month, I know that it's a very important recognition to make. Can I have another group of great folks come join me? Leon Raya, Pearl Raya, co-founders of the Raya Foundation. And does that name ring a bell to you guys? So Ed Raya was our former personnel director, and Pearl used to work here for the city as well. Welcome back. And we also have directors Lisa Silva, Josh Chagway, Jake Gray, Susie Gray, and Brandon Smith, and they're all board of directors for the Raya Foundation. And so we're here to talk about, and I'm going to talk very little because my throat is very sore, so I'm going to leave the floor to somebody to go ahead and speak a little bit more on this. But we're going to talk about the inaugural Santa Prep Basketball Showcase. So many of you know that academics and sports are the great equalizers, right? So we have a lot of great scholar athletes in the city. What's unfortunate is that we don't have the venues nor the forums to show them off. And we live in an area in Orange County that shares space with what's called the Trinity League. The Trinity League is probably one of the most competitive leagues in the country, produces athletes that are very high-level, going to our own modern-day, going to Orange Lutheran, St. Bishop's Mont, and so just crazy, crazy athletic wealth that we have here. And we don't show off our talent. And our folks here in town, our parents and our students deserve that same, you know, that same spotlight. And I'm looking at Brandon because he's a former Godinez High graduate and went to UCI, was recruited on full scholarship from them for his basketball talent. So let's give Brandon a big round of applause for that. And I know his uncle, Tim Smith, as well, and he's a graduate from, I think he went to Valley and then went on to Santa Ana College and was recruited by Oregon State as a starting cornerback. So great talent here in the city. The problem is, is we don't have enough of these tournaments to show our talent off to the rest of the county and the rest of the state. So what these good folks have done is they have started the Santa Ana Prep Basketball Showcase that is going to be an event that works towards accomplishing that. The Raya Foundation was actually formed 12 years ago, right here in Santa Ana, and it offers an array of youth sports and programs and scholarships to team alumni. The event, though, that is going to be taking place this Saturday, March 14th, will feature, and this is the great part, not just boys' basketball players, but girl basketball players as well. That's really important because we know that, you know, after the passing of Kobe Bryant and everything and all the attention that that received, I think what that made us reflect on was his daughter had such potential to make women's basketball on par with men's basketball. So just celebrating not only the talent that we have with the boys' basketball teams in the city, we'll be able to celebrate the girls as well. But the event's going to feature top girls and boys' basketball players from six Santa Ana high schools, including Century, Godinez, Santa Ana, Saddleback, Seeger Sherman Valley. The Raya Foundation has worked hard for our youth in this event to further proof of its efforts. I would like to present this certificate of recognition from the City of Santa Ana and a very, very grateful group of residents for recognition of your outstanding contributions. And I'm going to call Leon Raya to say a few words here on their behalf. Thank you so much, all of you, for bringing this tournament to the city. It's very important. We know that it's going to be a success. And even though this is the inaugural, we know that there's going to be several to follow because I know we're all going to be there to cheer these folks on. Leon, come on up and say a few words.
Thank you, Councilman Sarmiento, members of the city council, Mr. Mayor. The Raya Foundation, as Mr. Councilman Sarmiento mentioned, has been around 12 years. Started with a group of 10 boys who wanted to play basketball, thought they were really good, and wanted to play travel ball, went to their first tournament and lost 64 to 8. But over the course of those 10, 11, 12 years that we've been doing this, we've mentored and been able to work with hundreds of kids. We not only do our travel ball, we do a rec league for boys, a rec league for girls, we do a basketball league for kids who either aren't eligible or don't quite make the regular high school team, so that age group between 15 and 18 has someplace to play, has something positive to do. On April 19th, we're having our Santa Youth Games Track and Field Meet. We hope to have a few hundred kids out there. Track and field is near and dear to our hearts and allows kids who maybe aren't interested in a team sport to be in an individual sport. And there'll be a lot other activities coming down the road for the Raya Foundation. What then I want to mention before I talk a little bit more about the prep showcase is I'm particularly proud with us tonight also to have Abraham Hernandez, who's one of our directors. But the gentlemen you see here, these four young men, they're a part of that original program, and they've been with us ever since, and now they're giving back. These are the gentlemen who now are the head coaches in our program. They do our clinics, they do our teams, they help referee, and more importantly, this past summer, they put together a curriculum for leadership development for the kids in our program based on their experience of growing up in Santa Ana, going off to college in different venues, to help the children in our program understand the things you don't quite learn in other leadership programs about what you're going to face when you go away from home and go to college. So based on their input, they put together the curriculum, they did a wonderful job. I'd like a special round of applause for them for giving back now as volunteers to their community. So as Councilman Sarmiento mentioned, March 14th at Santa Ana Valley High School, we're having the inaugural Santa Ana Prep Showcase. And this has been a dream of our foundation for 10 years, to give the boys and girls who attend to six Santa Ana schools an opportunity to show off their basketball skills. And it just all happens that basketball is kind of our expertise, and it's why we're doing it. But it's going to be a very exciting event. We had a photo shoot last night for the program, and I will tell you that these boys and girls are incredibly excited. They're so excited to be part of this event and very thankful. So we're still looking for sponsors and donors. You can get us at riahfoundation.org or at 714-542-7473. The event's coming together really nice. We're going to have a three-point shooting contest. Maybe we should have one for the city council because I know you guys have played basketball before, so maybe we'll have a couple of dignitaries out there. But I want to thank Councilman Sarmiento for his support to Santa Ana Elks, wherever other community partners. But please, come out March 14th. Tickets are available online at Eventbrite. We want to make this a very, very special event for these young men and ladies that have worked really hard all season and deserve some celebration and some recognition. So thank you very much.
So remember that day, Saturday, March 14th. And I want to give a special shout out to our city manager and our staff because I know we're going to, is it Jerome? So we're going to be lending the folk, what's that?
Salgado.
Salgado Center. So Salgado Center is the gym that we're going to be letting them use to practice and to get ready, and it's going to be a great, great time. So Leon, let me give this to you before you leave. Share this with all the talent, all the future talent that you're going to be showing off over there, and let's give them a big round of applause once again.
Thank you very much for that. Now I want to call on Councilor Jose Solario, and he's going to be presenting to the Meals on Wheels. So if you're with Meals on Wheels, come on down.
So many great organizations and leaders. It's hard to follow these acts, but we can follow it today. We have some great leaders of a great organization. We have with us today Holly Hagler, President and CEO of Meals on Wheels OC, as well as Gio Corso, Vice President of the Home and Care Services Unit. You probably all have heard about Meals on Wheels Overtime, and, you know, their main purpose is to nourish the dignity of older adults and their families here in our community through wellness and through meals. For 40, for 50 years, the organization has been serving approximately 1 million meals annually. Isn't that amazing? Let's give them a round of applause for that. 1 million meals annually. Amazing. They've accomplished this through senior center lunch programs, at-home deliveries that they deliver on a, you know, daily basis, the Adult Day Healthcare Center, Care Transitions and Coordination Services, and other evidence-based programs. You know, a little bit unique is the Adult Day Healthcare Centers, which is one of the programs serviced by Meals on Wheels, and it's located here in Santa Ana. It is medically supervised. It's a daily care center that provides breakfast, lunch, and snacks, medication management, which is very important for all of us, I guess, including seniors, and supervision, socialization, physical and occupational therapy, and transportation to and from the facility. And so that's a great service as well. The city today recognizes Meals on Wheels of Orange County for their attention to and care of one of the most rapidly and important and dear populations to our heart, you know, the elderly in our community. On behalf of a grateful city, we thank them, and before we give them a certificate, let's give them another round of applause.
Thank you, Councilmember Solario, mayor, and Mr. Mayor, and members of the council. First of all, I wanted to let you know, you don't know this, but I'm a resident of Santa Ana, and I actually am in your ward. So that was, had nothing to do with tonight, but because Councilmember Solario and the whole city council really has been very supportive of the programs that we do for older adults in Santa Ana. We have partnered for decades. We provide the Hot Lunch Program at the Downtown Senior Center and at Southwest Community Center, which is temporarily closed for remodeling, but it will be opening soon. And then we provide Meals on Wheels delivered to homebound older adults. And those programs are open to older adults aged 60 and over. So if you know somebody that needs meals or needs to get out of their house and go to the senior center and interact with people, send them to mealsonwheelsoc.org. The older adult population is the only demographic in Orange County that is growing. Every other demographic is actually declining. So we need to be there to support older adults. Santa Ana has been a great partner to us and has been for years. And Gio, we'll just give you a quick second on our Adult Day Healthcare Center right here in Santa Ana.
Thank you. On behalf of our Adult Day Healthcare Program, our seniors who attend Monday through Friday through our, through over 30 years of our services in Adult Day Healthcare Centers, we want to thank you for this recognition, council and board. But overall, as Holly stated, is our senior population is the most needy, frail population, so it requires a lot of your support. And we couldn't have done this without the volunteers that we have in our groups. So if anybody's interested in volunteering in any of our programs, please go to mealsonwheelsoc.org. Thank you.
I think it's often easy to kind of neglect how hard it can be for some, you know, seniors, and just having nutritious meals can be an issue, whether transportation-related, health-related, income-wise, whatever it might be. So that's important. And then socialization, you know, a lot of folks age in place and unfortunately often age alone, and so programs like Meals on Wheels are outstanding. So on behalf of, on behalf of our mayor and city council, I presented this to you, and congratulations. Thank you.
Thank you for those presentations. And with that, I'm going to take one item out of order, and then we'll continue with the consent calendar. And the one item is going to be item 60, Beers and Boy. And I believe the request is for a two-week be item sixty, Beers and Boy. And I believe the request is for a two-week, uh, continuance, but, um, I know Councilmember Sarmiento wanted to be here for that. Um, well, why don't we take it if we need more input? I know his request was that when staff does come back, that the ware contract be co-terminus with waste disposal for the one-year extension. Uh, he asked me, he told me that was his request. So, I'll go ahead and call on Mayor Protem.
Yeah, I'm gonna make a motion to extend.
Second.
Two weeks.
Okay. Any, uh, opposition? Do we want to press the green buttons?
Just a quick comment.
Councilor Solario?
A comment that I do appreciate that, because it's a very important contract. You know, our residents spend, you know, a lot of money, uh, towards these services, and we gotta do very good due diligence over this RFP. Also, there's, uh, a new part of the recommendation that we hadn't heard of before, which is, uh, you know, Prop two eighteen process as well. So, I want to give that, uh, extra.
Extra attention.
Attention as well. So, two weeks would be fantastic.
Thank you. Those in favor, press green.
Yes, Councilmember Peñalosa.
And just, uh, Madam City Manager, for the Prop two eighteen, uh, hearing, I want to make sure that, that we're very careful in when we schedule, whenever that hearing may come and be, because, um, in the past, where we've scheduled, uh, hearings, when we have, uh, heavy items on the agenda, and, you know, the hearing doesn't come till about midnight and one, at one AM, and all the speakers that had submitted cards leave. So, it's important that we're, uh, transparent and fair with, with the hearing. And make sure that, uh, whenever that day may be, 'cause I noticed that there was an April twenty-first day on the agenda. I'm not sure why that date was selected. Um, but I would hope that when that hearing does take place, that we're vigilant of what other items on the agenda and make sure it's, uh, it's a light agenda for have, to, in order for that hearing to take place.
Certainly can do that.
Thank you.
And Mayor, I do have some reportable action that I have to get on the record for.
I know, but let us vote on this. Uh, those in favor, please say aye or press green. It's unanimous. Let's go ahead and report out.
Yeah, just real quick. Um, on item one A on the agenda this evening, I have to report out that the council by a five to zero vote approved up to a ninety-two thousand dollar settlement. Mayor Polito and Councilmember Iglesias were absent from that conversation. With respect to item number two, case two, the city council authorized by a vote of four to zero, um, the filing of an unlawful detainer on a city-owned property, um, with Councilmember Sarmiento abstaining, and Mayor Polito and Iglesias absent. On all other matters, direction was given to staff. That's all I have to report.
Thank you. Uh, any, uh, comments from the public on, on consent counter items, Madam Clerk? Okay, let's hear from, uh, Dale Helvig on item twenty-five, Gias and George. I see another white beard back there, Dale.
For the bearded sec.
No, no, there's another one up here.
It's competition.
Three white beards today. Okay, go ahead.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Uh, spoke earlier on this issue. I'd like to bring it back to you guys, 'cause it, it deals with, uh, the twenty-five G issue. I just wanted to update the council on the possible spreading of inaccurate information and reports of intimidation that our volunteers, as well as paid referendum signature gatherers, said they experienced during the referendum process. I've been provided a picture of a man at Target who was reported to selling, telling volunteer, as well as paid signature gatherers, in a manner they told me they found intimidating. That was, that it was illegal to gather signatures on that day, Monday, February twenty-fourth. I also personally observed the same gentleman who was in the picture inquiring about the number of referendum signatures being sent over to the register of voters when I was at City Hall on Tuesday, February twenty-fifth. I've never met the man seen in the picture or at City Hall, but was told his name was Ernie Condi. If that is correct, he may be a retired Santa Ana police officer presently employed by the Police Officers Association. If so, I find the potential connection between POA and this developer curious. If this is Mr. Condi, and he is an employee of the POA, I ask the council members to inquire into why someone from the POA might be interested in spreading apparent inaccurate information regarding the deadline for gathering of referendum signatures by the POA citizen constituents on a vineyard development proposal at twenty-five twenty-five Main. Of course, if this is not the case, please let me know at once. Let me be clear on one other point as well. In all, eighteen thousand nine hundred and ninety-five signatures from Santa Ana residents from all across the city were obtained. While this effort may have started in Park San Diego, it has grown to include support from many Santa Ana neighborhoods: Artesia Pilar, Bristol Memory Coalition, Bristol Warner, Edna Park, Casa de Santiago, Fisher Park, Floral Park, French Park, Henninger Park, Mayberry Park, Meredith Parkway, Mid-City, Morrison Park, River View, Sandpoint, South Coast Metro, Thornton Park, Washington Square, Wilshire Square, and Windsor Village North, to name a few. Well, over thirteen thousand signatures were gathered by residents of S- Santa Ana. Yes, we did hire a company to assist us during the final week. However, contrary to more inaccurate, contrary to more inaccurate information that I understand is being spread, it was paid for by residents of Santa Ana and their volunteer supporters, not the POA or any political elected individual. This service was paid for by Santa Ana resident donations, such as a ninety-three-year-old resident who drove to my house to ensure I got a twenty-five dollar contribution. These people care about the future of Santa Ana. We did what was expected of us, as described in an email from the city. The deadline for filing of the referendum petition is Monday, February twenty-fourth, before five PM. Thank you.
With that, I'm gonna bring it back to council. Any items council members want to pull or abstain on? Councilmember Iglesias, go ahead, please.
I want to pull twenty, oops, sorry, twenty A and twenty-five A.
Twenty-eight and twenty-five A. I'd entertain a motion on, yes, Councilwoman Peñalosa.
I'd like to pull twenty-five C, uh, twenty-five D, and twenty-nine A. It'll be quick.
No worries, no worries. So, I'd entertain a motion on the balance.
Second.
Those in favor, press green. Uh, let's go on item twenty-eight. I believe that was Councilmember Iglesias.
Yes, yes. Okay. Um, okay. This is the, the item, to approve an appropriation adjustment in the amount of seven hundred and ten thousand dollars to the, to support the costs associated with the signature verification and additional activities relating to the May nineteenth, May nineteenth, twenty-twenty special election. So, I just wanted to pull it, 'cause I, I want to be a no on this one.
Okay. Any other thought or comment? I'd entertain a motion.
So move.
Second.
Those in favor, press green. Okay, next item, twenty-five A. I believe we had two councilors pull that item.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, thank you. Uh, mine's, uh, very brief. Uh, it's basically, the item is to, can you find my place here?
It's the Red Trolley.
In a pre-agreement with Duloc Enterprise for the trolley service for special events in the city. I just wanted to thank staff for the very descriptive and, and detailed, uh, staff report on the amounts and, and, uh, the costs associated with this and the numerous different events. Um, I, I wasn't gonna question why we're using census, census money, but, you know, further in the staff report, I realized that it was for census events, which is a mall in favor of. I would just like to ask that we make sure that the trolley is, is branded with our city, Santa Ana, um, as much as we can. I know I've seen it in downtown with, with Long Beach banners hanging off of it, which was a little confusing for me. So, uh, just as long as we keep that in mind, when we're using, uh, this trolley for numerous events, I'd appreciate it. And that was it.
Would you like to make a motion? Were those requests as part of the motion?
Oh, yes. I'd like to, to make a motion, uh, adding, uh, that branding, uh, request to.
Was there a second?
Second.
Okay. Those in favor, press green. Go ahead. You have comments? Go ahead.
So, um, I know you, we spoke about it, um, Christine, on who is gonna benefit from using this, this service. Um, I just wanted, um, for you to kind of share, like, the history of where the trolley came from, and then why is it that we're using it, and, um, like, who's gonna be benefiting. I know you mentioned, like, the downtown, um, merchants, that they're excited about this. So, just so, um, individuals just didn't think it's another trolley maybe mistaking it for the streetcar. Please.
Certainly, Councilmember. I'll ask Stephen Mendoza to give the history on it, but as far as who's gonna benefit from it, it will both serve the residents of the city, and then it will also serve those that are visiting our city in juror capacities as well.
Thank you very much. Um, the, the original intent of the trolley, it started out as the Art Walk trolley. It started out on the Saturday nights of Art Walk, and was very successful for many years, and we wanted to continue that process. The contract came to an end, but this time we, um, had the opportunity of adding on some census events to it as well. The census events aren't very close to some parking areas, so this will help Daisy achieve some of her goals of attracting people that may not have parking opportunities near our census events. And then the, the trolley will be visitors, Orange County-wide, on Mondays, that will be assigned to jury duty here in our civic center. And this will create a linkage between them and our other area of downtown where the restaurant community is. Monday is the busiest day at jury duty. It's also the first day of most jurors', um, assignments with the, with the courts. And so, we predicted that would be the high day and the day for them to first discover downtown, and then find their way to downtown on Tuesday, Wednesday, or Thursday.
Thank you.
So, with that, any other additional comment? Now, we have a motion by Peñalosa earlier, I believe. Is there a second? We said, uh, Basera, so those in favor, press green. Next item, I believe is twenty-five, uh, C.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Twenty-five C is to approve an agreement with SoCal Rides for carnival services at city events. Um, Madam City Manager, you're right. I was shocked at the very little amount that would, were estimated to receive from the, as a part of that thirty percent. Uh, because it's such a small amount, anywhere from five to ten thousand dollars, I believe is what it said, uh, I think it, we should look at ways where we could give that back to our residents at these events. As in, I know the OC Fair has free days, has, you know, free from twelve to two on a certain day. Uh, you know, these fairs do get pricey and expensive, uh, and are not of, you know, affordable to a lot of our residents. So, instead of, you know, having these thirty percent savings or, or, uh, share of the profits with these carnival, uh, rides, I think we should maybe look at, at a way that we could give it back to them at these same events that we're having, uh, in the city, in forms of, of tickets or, or food, or just kind of an incentive to bring people to the fair. Um, not saying the whole thing free, but a couple of, of the, a couple hours maybe. Uh, just an idea that I had. I'm not sure where my colleagues, uh, how my colleagues feel on that. But, um, do, do these savings or the, the sharing profits, do they just go back into a, uh, general fund pot? Is it Parks and Rec?
It would go back to the Parks and Rec Department. Um, but if you would like, staff certainly can look at using a portion of those funds to do, whether it's free wristbands for residents on certain dates at certain times. We, we could do that for you. Um, you would need to amend the, well, actually, you wouldn't need to amend the agreement, 'cause the agreement has a revenue coming to us, but you would need to, to direct us to do that type of a program to encourage local residents.
Maybe more, more, not necessarily a program, but more of a study of what options we could possibly have. If, if it's, you know, if it won't do a ding in the Parks and Rec budget, or if it's something that's, uh, incredibly needed in, in the department. Uh, I'm just looking at, at a creative way where we could give that money back to, to the residents at the same events. A possibility, maybe just a study or a, or a different options that we could, uh, play with.
We could, with, if, with your passage of this item, we certainly can come up with those types of ideas, and then just communicate it to you with, via memo.
Okay.
And if any of you have objections to it, you can certainly let me know.
All righty. Councilor Solario?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I, I think that's a, that's a good idea. And I, often, many of our families have very large families, and so, you know, you, you may have five, five children, and maybe, you know, some cousin friends or something that, you know, could get very expensive. And, uh, yeah, maybe there's like just a, a discount time for some days or hours. And I know this time we're seeing it here as the specific agreement that, uh, that we're trying to execute, but, you know, often we'll do RFPs, and maybe in the RFPs, we can also ask the, the vendors, as part of their proposal, to suggest some kind of program. 'Cause I'm sure there's ways that are better than others, and we may think, you know, a certain way is the way to do it, and, uh, they may know what, what's better overall. And so, that might be an idea for the future, too.
All right. So, I believe, go ahead. Make a motion to approve.
Is there a second? Those in favor, press green. Next item, I think twenty-five D is in David.
I also have that. Again, um, approve an agreement with California barricade rentals for, uh, traffic control and street closures at the same events. I just, uh, wanna make sure that we want, we're, you know, protecting ourselves, uh, after that incident that happened at the Fiesta Patrias, uh, this past year, when somebody unplugged the barricades and water started rushing. It looked like Jumanji, uh, down towards the stage. I was there, Daisy was there, the electrical generators were there. Could've been really bad, but nothing happened. Uh, but, uh, are we, was that a fault of the contractor? Was that a, uh, is this the same person?
Yeah, I, I don't remember or recall why they actually emptied that barricade earlier than they should. But we certainly can make sure that doesn't happen again.
Please, thank you. Just, uh, just that, uh, that these contractors and companies that we're using are mindful of, of what that would do by unplugging, uh, the barricades and draining them when there's thousands of people right next to it. So, um, with that said, I'll make a motion to approve.
I'll go ahead, second from Mayor Protem. Those there, press green. Next item, Madam City Clerk, fifty-five A.
Twenty-nine A.
Let's first do an oath at office. Don't we have somebody we need to swear in?
Yes, we do.
Let's do that right now.
Okay. If I can ask Cielo Echegoyen to come up, please, and Cory Nelson, if you're here.
Raise your hand. I'll repeat after me. I, please state your name.
I, Cielo Echegoyen.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support.
That I will support.
And defend.
And defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic.
That I will.
That I will.
Bear true faith and allegiance.
Bear true faith and allegiance.
To the Constitution of the United States.
To the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
That I take this obligation freely.
That I take this obligation freely.
Without any mental reservation.
Without any mental reservation.
Or purpose of evasion.
Or purpose of evasion.
That I will.
That I will.
Well and faithfully discharge.
Well and faithfully discharge.
The duties upon which I'm about to enter.
The duties upon which I'm about to enter. Congratulations.
Twenty-nine, twenty-nine A. It was pulled by Councilmember.
Twenty-nine A.
Yes.
Oh, twenty-nine A, okay. This is, uh, just for the national fitness campaigns at our parks. Um, Madam City Manager, maybe, if you want, or Parks and Rec, I just wanted to get a timeline on, on when these would be, is this would be completed by summertime this year, and also Memorial Park, I know was also part of the original, uh, approval a year ago. Just wanted to see what that.
Our Director of Parks will answer that question for you.
Perfect.
Absolutely. Um, yes, the, um, Delhi and Rosita will be completed by the end of the fiscal year. And then also, uh, Salvador and Memorial, we need to identify funding for those projects, and, uh, we hope to have those in the next fiscal year.
So, and just for clarification, so the grants that were, were, uh, I guess, approved to, to be receiving, those are just grants for, to help as part of the costs?
Correct.
So, it wouldn't cover the, the entire thing, right?
Correct. No, the, the, the entire cost is around a hundred and twenty thousand, and this is a thirty thousand dollar grant per site.
Uh, got it. Okay, so, so we would still need to come up with the funds for those additional sites?
Right.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Would you like to move?
Yeah, I'll make a motion to approve.
Those in favor, press green. Those in favor press green. Next item, I think is 55A. I would entertain a motion on this item.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second with comment.
Go ahead, comment.
So I just wanted to get a little bit of an update on this because I know, I believe it was on, in September that we approved the DDA. So I know there was a lot of representations made, so I'm wondering if we somehow prevented the applicant at that time, which was Caribou, and I see Mike out there. Thanks for coming, Mike. I know there was going to be some lights and some windows that were going to be boarded up, things were going to get cleaned up. What's been done between then and now?
You're absolutely correct, Councilmembers. Should we have executed the agreement, it would have started a timeline for Caribou Industry to do some instant improvements to the outside of the YMCA building. Unfortunately, we didn't have that in place and the Surplus Land Act went into effect January 1. And I'll ask Executive Director Stephen Mendoza to talk a little bit about why we have to follow the Surplus Land Act, the new one that went into effect January 1.
No, we, I know we definitely have to follow the SLA, but I guess what, what was done before, or during the time, during September to January 1, when we knew that we had to be compliant with the SLA?
In accordance with the new law, an agreement would have had to been in place, either an ENA or a DDA would have had to been placed by September 30th of 2019. You saw with the Willowick project, you had that project subject to the same thing.
Right, so.
And you saw the lawsuits start, you saw the, the, the people come out against those projects as well. So we were very cautious about.
No, so I guess, maybe I'm not making myself clear. I, I get that we have to comply with the SLA and put it out there. There's no doubt that we have to comply with California law. But between the time that we knew we had to comply in January and September 3rd, when we approved the DDA, I know that there were representations that improvements were going to be made, or at least to make sure we abate some of the problems, I think, that Mr. Hara had raised to us, which there were homeless encampments, you know, windows were broken, things were done. Was any of that done during at least that, those three months?
No, sir. We hadn't come to terms for an ENA by that time.
Got it, so.
The obligation for him to do those would have started when his agreement started and it hasn't started. So his timeline to complete those hasn't even started yet.
Okay, so that was set aside until now, we have to comply with the SLA. And so once we're done with that, if in fact it comes back, I guess we get those representations, that'll be fulfilled.
Absolutely.
Okay, great, thank you.
Would you like to move it?
We've already got a motion and a second.
Those in favor, press green.
I have a question.
Oh, go ahead.
So for this item, it doesn't change our, just, just from my understanding, it doesn't change what we've already agreed to back in September with Mr. Hara?
We are obligated to follow a number of steps under the current SLA, the Surplus Land Act, which means this is one of the first steps. You're adopting the resolution that's declaring it a surplus property. Then from there, we have to notify certain agencies, local school, district, affordable housing developers of the availability of the surplus piece of land. And then we need to engage in good faith efforts if anyone is in fact interested in acquiring it. And then at the end, we do get to make the decision as to who we provide the property to based on the, the purchase price and the fair market value.
So then this would void then the, the action that we took back in, in September to do the exclusive agreement with, with Hara?
I'm not sure if the legal term void would be.
It, it certainly interrupts the process, but it doesn't necessarily void the direction that you gave to city staff.
Okay. And then it's, this also then give him an opportunity to buy it, or?
Yes, at the, at the, after you do all of those steps under the Surplus Land Act and you don't reach any agreement or have an offer on the table that you would consider for the property, you're free to offer it up and can continue with the negotiations with Caribou Industries.
Okay, and this has been, again, most likely it's been explained then to, to Mr. Hara and what's happening. So then for, how long would this interrupt the process?
This process, there's two steps. There's 60 days to give all of those agencies that the city manager mentioned an opportunity to send us a letter of interest and then 90 days of good faith.
Just about, roughly about five, six months?
Yeah.
That's if you actually get any interest from it. If you don't have any interest in it, you don't have to engage in the full time length of the second step.
Okay, okay, thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, go ahead.
Just some brief comments. I, I think because in the past we've done RFPs and we've made other solicitations about folks that want to buy this property, that, you know, we need to be legal obligations. But beyond that, let's not be too free in adding too much additional time. I know there's been a lot of staff work and a lot of private sector work and making this move forward. And so definitely, you know, let's abide by the law, but let's try to be expeditious about this. Thank you.
Thank you for those comments. So with that, I believe we have a motion and a second. Those in favor, press green. Next, are we on the, is it 55B?
That's correct.
I would entertain a motion.
So moved.
Second. Those in favor, press green. 60A, I would call on Mayor Pro Tem.
I'd like to make a, a motion on this item. Mr. Mayor, my colleagues would, would support it, it'd be greatly appreciated. I would like for the, for the original amounts to be reinstated for the Women's Journey Foundation and Ranabó del Cielo. If we could have those amounts kept the same because they're being reduced. And if we could direct staff to find new funding for the Friday Night Lights program from a different department.
Okay, before additional comment, we do have one speaker, Dr. Anna Jimenez, please, OCC TAC.
Good evening, Mayor, Councilmembers, City Manager. Thank you for giving me the opportunity. Just to say a few words. First of all, our organization has been in this city for 20 years. This year, we're going to celebrate 20 years serving the Santana Community. So I'm very, very excited and hopefully I will meet with some of you to share a little bit more. Each one of you has a little folder, a packet of information regarding some of our, just all, all the things that we have accomplished throughout the 20 years. But I specifically want to thank the council members for giving us the opportunity this year again. We're one of the agencies recommended for the Community Development Block Grant. And we have been doing this grant for the past three years at Willard Middle School because it has been a very, very challenging environment for the youth. And we have been very successful the past three years doing our Crime Prevention and Intervention Program. This year, we're also excited to be able to expand the same program that we have at Willard, but at Car Middle School. So you will see the letters of support that we received from the principals at both middle schools. And we really appreciate the fact that our agency is being recommended for funding. So thank you very much and I hope to get your support too. Thank you.
Thank you. So we had a motion earlier by Mayor Pro Tem. Councilor Venzar Miento?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Very briefly, I wanted to thank Dr. Anna Jimenez. I've been a big fan of OCTAGS for many, many long, many years when you were in the downtown. Hopefully one day we'll get you back into the downtown when we find a sufficient space, large enough to accommodate everything that you do. Because every time I go to the building where you're at, use every square inch or square foot of space and it's used really, really well. So I certainly want to thank you for being part of the community, of network, of, of resource providers because you certainly do a great job. So thank you for staff making sure that there's an allocation. The only other mention I was going to make, Madam City Manager, was on Delhi Center. And I know that they have a couple of entries here with respect to the Family Economic Success Initiative Program and the teens engaged in learning and leadership. To the extent that there is any residual funding here, once maybe adjustments are made, or maybe there's some outside funding, I know that they've done, you know, a very, very compelling job of helping families with just learning how to bank, learning how to use their economic resources themselves. A lot of folks in that neighborhood and through town, throughout town, go there and seek support. So they do a great job with that and they also provide services to teens. And so, you know, it does, it, it is such an anchor community center in our city that whatever help we can find them, you know, would be greatly appreciated. So, thank you.
Thank you. So with that, additional, yes, go ahead.
I think we like to always add, you know, to, to these items rather than take away. It sounds like there's, you know, two or three organizations that were a little bit out of whack of. Maybe as in the past, staff can come back with a general fund dollars or we have some youth cannabis fund dollars that maybe we could program because a lot of these are oriented that way. So I don't know if we need to act on this tonight, or if maybe you can take this input to, to bring it back. Because I think staff tried to make an effort at funding some of the requests from last time and now, now. It's different, so is there time for that?
I, well, I do believe I understand what their requests are. So this item was before you at the last council meeting. And we did make some changes to accommodate the direction from that council meeting. And it did entail the reduction of two of the organizations to put money together for the, the Summer Night Lights program. So what I'm hearing, the motion really is on the table, is to move forward with the approval with a few modifications. And that being restoration of the two that lost funding to put money together for Summer Night Lights and find else, money from somewhere else for the Summer Night Lights program. And then in addition, should we find any other monies from a different source, also to enhance Delhi. That's my understanding and I can move forward with that direction.
If you can, then I think that is acceptable.
Right.
That's the motion then. Motion and second. Those in favor, press green.
And the motion is to accept the recommendations with two modifications. Restoring the two that were reduced from the last time it was before you to put the money together for the Summer Night Lights program. And then finding money from elsewhere for the Summer Night Lights program.
And how much money is that, just for the?
So they reduced the two, first recommended for those two organizations by $30,000 each to put $60,000 together for Summer Night Lights. And then the second modification would be to direct staff to find any additional dollars for Delhi.
Maybe this similar amount, that's probably the only thing we haven't discussed. Councilwoman Sarmiento, did you have a dollar amount?
I'm sorry, I lost.
An amount for Delhi that you were looking for?
You know, I didn't. I'm not sure what the request was. I think the request was obviously higher than what was received. And I don't know if we can fill that gap, but to the extent that there could, there could be some enhanced, because these are two-year allocations and I know in the past we've gone out on a yearly and so they're used to the annual. But to the extent we're going to go out for a two-year contract, I get it, that way you don't keep coming back every year. But if you can, maybe try to get as close as you can to what their original was or, you know, I don't have a figure.
And it was reasonable and it wasn't past the business, it's not that.
Councilor Elise?
But my question is, okay, the other two programs that they received over $100,000. Why was it that they received over $100,000? Because, just because they asked for it? Or was it, was there a criteria saying you guys, I mean, this is the max we can, you know, award per provider?
The AdHoc and the full commission went through all of the applications and met with each one of the organizations that was seeking funding and came up with those recommended amounts for you the last time. And those two organizations were both over $100,000. I think they were both like $114,000. Then based on your input, what staff did is when they went back and they looked at what was awarded, they looked at the ones that received the larger amounts and those were the ones they selected to take back money, to cobble money together for the Summer Night Lights program.
And, and I believe that's what happened last year too, because I know we did give Pastor Nati money for the night light out because he wasn't awarded last time either. So I don't know, I just, I just have a concern that, you know, we're bringing, we're taking money from other, other area. What area are you thinking of taking the money from in order for us to fund it?
Most likely it would be general fund dollars that I would be seeking for a budget for next year for them. Or if we could find any other type of grant or special money that we could use based on the arts and culture programs that they are.
Why, why don't we just keep it as the way it is? I mean, I would, I would say leave it as it is. And then if, you know, if the other two individuals that need more money, then, you know, then we can find the money later. But I think right now we could just, we should just leave it as is. I mean, this is the recommendation. We held it for two weeks for a reason. You guys went back, you know, you guys did your research. It's okay, this is how we're going to solve this, this dilemma that we're having.
So that basically would be an alternative motion?
Yeah, but let's continue on this one. Mayor Pro Tem?
Real quick, so, you know, the, the Delhi Center had like three different programs that applied. And they were the largest amount, or two, actually I think there was three, but they were down to two. And there were pretty large amounts and I think that, you know, we want to help them. And I understand that maybe we want to increase that amount just a bit. But the AdHoc Committee or the committee that was composed by the commission, the committee and a staff member from the city did make some good recommendations and they gave me some good reasons why. But I do believe that, you know, the Summer Night Lights program is very effective. They, it's very, very good. I've attended quite a few. And, you know, I think it's necessary for our youth and the families, especially in these areas where they're being presented. So that's why I think it's important. And so I would like that to keep going and that's my personal request. And if my colleagues feel that they want to support, then, you know, thank you very much.
Okay, we have additional comment. Penya Loza, followed by Solario, followed by Basara.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I don't, how, Madam City Manager, if we were to, to push back, push this back again two weeks, would it be, cause a delay in these different organizations receiving these funds?
We could delay two weeks.
I would feel much rather comfortable just approving the, the item as is and then finding the fundings for those organizations that were reduced from, from the, whatever pots we, we could find. That way everybody at least gets something from the get-go. So I'd like to make a substitute motion to approve the item as is with, and then have staff come back with, with additional funding for those two organizations that were reduced because they were both getting over 100 grand. That's a substantial amount of money compared to the other organizations across the board. I know there are dozens that didn't receive any. So that would be my substitute motion.
Okay, we have a substitute motion with second. Comment?
So a lot of El Cielo's been here 45 years and we just presented an award for them. 45 years of being here, giving so much back. We're talking generations of families in Balafla Corico here and it's a, it's a landmark. So, I mean, we're going to, we're going to approve this and then turn around and try to find more funding later. Or we could just go ahead and approve the original and then go ahead and find for.
Well, vote against the substitute and then the original come back.
Copy that.
Let's, I think Solario wanted to speak and then Basara.
You know, I think either route goes fine. I think we just want to fully fund the organizations we're talking about. Maybe so there's a little bit of comfort too. Maybe tonight on either option, if we can just kind of say we're approving both. So even if it's, you know, Councilmember Viega's motion, maybe we just add that the remaining amount be funded out of the cannabis youth dollars, for example, or the general fund. That way we can act on it collectively. I think there is a little bit of unease that some folks get, you know, their share tonight. Some may need a way two weeks or beyond and there's a sense of unfairness there. So those are just my thoughts. But either that we do it all today or do it all in a couple of weeks. But some now, some later, that's what doesn't feel as right.
So can I, may I clarify, Councilmember? So what you're, you're asking is do approval as what the recommendation is before you tonight, but then also direct staff to find additional dollars for the two organizations that were reduced and the Delhi?
But to make that part of the motion. But I think right now it's just that colleagues were trying to figure out the best route.
That's what I'm saying. We're doing the same thing.
You're doing the same thing.
I think the original motion accomplished that. Councilor Basara?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think we're really blessed in the city to have all these organizations come through. And I think that's the challenge that we all face is trying to figure out the appropriate amounts to help these organizations accomplish all the wonderful work that they're doing for our community. With that being said, we had a very, I think, thoughtful and thorough process to vet the allocations for these organizations. And I want to thank the, the commission, staff and everybody that did all the hard work. And if I remember correctly from our previous meeting, actually did some site visits and really kind of flushed out everything. But with that being said, I, I just, for me, I'm very uncomfortable with the idea of just giving vague general direction to staff on these sorts of things, you know, go, go find the money. Just go figure it out. I think we should be a little more, I, I think cautious and more conscientious of how this money is being spent and where it's coming from. I want to echo some of the sentiments that my colleagues have already said as far as, you know, I think what we have before us is appropriate. I think what I would feel more comfortable with is staff coming back to us with specific dollar amounts and where the money is coming from, just so that we know where it's coming from. It's not just coming out of thin air, but we understand where it's coming from. But I, I do, you know, agree with the mayor and the Pro Tem as far as let's try to get to that goal of getting everybody funded. to that goal of getting everybody funded, but let's just at least be more clear in how it's being done. That's my only concern.
Mr. Mayor.
All right, well, we have a substitute motion and we have an original motion. Go ahead, Mayor Protem.
And thank you, Councilmember Becerra, but the thing is, you know, we're not hiding anything. Just, we're, we're going to find out where the money's coming from regardless. So, you know, whether it's this one, this motion or the previous motion, it's still on paper and I just wanted to make that clear.
All right, we have a substitute motion.
Real quick, I just want to be clear, I'm not, I'm not alluding that we're hiding anything. All I'm just saying is just to have it more clear on here that this is where the money's coming from.
I think the original motion addressed that, but, but we have a substitute motion. Those in favor press green. Those opposed, press red, obviously. So it passes on a four to three. The substitute motion.
You know how we used to do it? We used to use that time in the interim and I don't know if anybody used these two weeks effectively, I think just to sit.
Apparently not.
I know, but that, it was, it was simpler because it is difficult to say no or here's more, here's less.
City manager used to sit with people and actually take.
But it's incumbent upon us to share that with her.
With the city manager.
Madam City Manager, then I have a conversation with you.
Yeah.
Couple of times about this, so.
So, and I think, you know, some of us did, but, but I know that it's, it's so difficult to like, because sometimes it seems random and arbitrary because everybody has a compelling argument, you know, there is.
And ultimately it is random and arbitrary, it's why we're here. All right, so next item.
One more thing, Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
Madam City Clerk, I need to change my motion on 20A and I want to be a no on that.
20A, record him as a no, please.
Don't know why, since my colleague voted against me, but that's okay.
All right, are we now on item 75A?
Yes.
Oh, 65A, to discuss filthy dog park at Centennial Park provided staff, didn't we already do that?
No, you haven't seen this information. We do have a brief presentation if you will entertain us.
All right.
It's a good presentation. So I want to get out of here.
All right, good evening, Mayor, Mayor Protem, members of the city council. Lisa Rudolph, Executive Director of Parks Recreation and Community Services. Tonight, we are here to follow up on the December 3 meeting where you directed the city manager to look into this feasibility of a dog park at Centennial Park. And we did that. In my research, I found that this is not the first time, this has come to the city council in 2010, there was a request for a dog park or dog parks. The city, or the Parks and Recreation Agency conducted a feasibility study in 2011 and determined there were two areas for a dog park and one of them was actually this Centennial Park, which we're talking about tonight. The proposed site is a three and a half acre site behind the reservation office. It's in the southwest corner of the park and I went and walked this the other day and it, and it really is a perfect location for a dog park. There's no homes around it, they will not be bothered, bothering the neighborhood. There's many places that you can enter and exit. There is ample parking, there is a parking structure. We also have a parking lot here by the reservation office. We could make a path to the proposed dog, a walking path to the site here. We also have a really cool entrance here off of Castor and you could put a gate here if you wanted to. People could enter this way and even if we needed additional parking, the site could accommodate additional parking. I don't think we need that because we have the parking structure. There is also a little entrance here off the bike trail. We could also, you know, people taking their dogs for a run on the bike trail, they could enter that way. So it's a really good site in my opinion. The only problem with this site is it's for educational purposes only. And so before this, it used to be for recreational purposes and the city changed it to educational purposes for the construction of a fire training center. And so the fire training center was there for some time, then it closed. All right, it's okay. And, and so we would have to convert that back to recreational purposes because it would be a dog park. And so there's two ways to do that. One is a land conversion, similar to what we're doing at Centennial Educational Center. We would have to do a land swap, a land conversion. We'd have to purchase like square footage acres and equal value. So we'd have to find money to do that. Then we'd have to get National Park Service approval. Or we could do a surplus, surplus the land. So we would give it back to the National Park Service, they would surplus the land, but then we'd run into potentially other, someone else buying it. And I think this happened when the fire training center, they almost lost it, the city almost lost it because somebody else wanted to purchase it. So those are two ways that we could change the use of this area back to recreational. Once we get it back to recreational, then we can hire a consultant to develop the conceptual plans, the construction drawings and provide a quote for how much it would cost to develop. We did talk with the city of Anaheim, they're developing a one acre dog park and it's about 400,000 per acre. So we estimated it would be about 1.6 million for this site. This is the entrance off of Castor. If you were to put a gate, you could potentially put a gate here and people could drive in. We also, you also asked about future dog parks throughout the city and I think we can accomplish that by, oh wait, I'm sorry, there is like a really important dog in this picture.
That is a really beautiful dog.
It's a beautiful, it's a, it's a show-winning dog. I think it's Councilmember Penyalosa's.
He's smart, he's cute.
He is, I know. He's, he's amazing, he's an amazing dog.
He smells like dirt. And he eats Barbies?
He eats Barbies. That's a sick dog. I don't know what, so.
Also, I've, I've heard avocados are bad for, for dogs, but he's been eating them whole since he was like a puppy.
Oh, you may need to go to training, so I'm not sure what. Anyway, so back, back to me. The future dog parks, we could accomplish that by doing a Parks Master Plan. It will identify other areas in the city. It does a comprehensive review of our city and tells us other locations and such. So I don't have any other pictures of any other councilmembers' dogs. That's the end of my presentation and I'd be happy to answer any questions.
I have a question, is there?
Oh, Lord. Get it off me.
Thank you, Lisa, for the nice presentation. Now they put me up there, thank you.
Okay.
You can see my, my voting sticker. If anyone here hasn't voted, please leave and vote. You've got 30 minutes. With that said, thank you so much for this presentation, very nice. But I, I had some questions in regards to the educational component of it and how the land, and I briefly discussed this with the, with the city manager. And if there was a way where we, all that land swap, you know, isn't necessary in making the, the dog park in itself educational and, you know, maybe the, the border fence around the park consists of educational ways of how to care for your dogs and your animals and, and, you know, different organizations allowed them to educate and be responsible pet owners. Because I know that in Santa Ana, there, there's a lot of unresponsive or not responsible pet owners in regards to neutering and spaying and, and training and, and I've heard of, of training roosters and to fight and dogs to fight, which is terrible. And maybe we could, we could use the signage and fencing around the park perimeter to educate people on the importance of neutering, the importance of spaying, the importance of, of training, the importance of different breeds, how to care for different animals. Would that be a way where we could address that educational part of it and, and allow us to move forward with the dog park without having to do any of these land swaps?
Councilman, Member Penyalosa, I don't know the answer. I would have to contact the National Park Service, do a little more research and have to get back to you or the city manager on that.
I really liked the ideas that you had in the concept. We'll have to research it and it'll be one of those where we'll, we'll seek approval on it without really trying to give everything away on it with the deed restrictions. I can say that with the work that we did with the college and working with the National Park Service, it's a very arduous and long process.
Okay. And one small little question, and the park reservation center that's just right next to it.
Yes.
Is, is, how many, I mean, is that, are we using that to 100% of its full ability?
Yes.
Okay.
And also the police department is utilizing that area.
For training, right?
For training, yes.
I heard, okay. So that's used daily by Parks and Rec staff and the police department?
Yes, and we also have our park security, seven vehicles parked there in that parking lot.
The, the park security guards?
Mm-hmm.
The allied universal?
Yes.
Okay. But it's not just used for vehicle storage? Is that, so it's used for?
No, the, the buildings are utilized.
Oh, okay.
By Parks and Recreation and the police department.
Okay, because I was under the impression that it was only being used for vehicle storage, like a extra parking lot for staff and that the buildings were, and again, I could be wrong, but I was under the impression that the building was underutilized, so maybe, and it, it's an older building?
Yes, they're modular, older buildings.
Right.
For sure.
So, I mean, maybe it could open up a better, a bigger idea in downsizing the, the footprint of the building to what we can or if it is needed, you know, tell me now and I won't. But, but just looking at different ways where we could maybe expand the, make it a, a bigger size, because you said three point.
A bigger, it's three and a half acres.
Three and a half acres.
It's huge, yes.
Okay.
You could even put, you know, water features, I mean, you, it could really be a, a nice dog park.
Okay.
And, and I think it's ample space, but if you're looking for bigger space, we certainly could take a look at that.
No, I mean, it's, I'm just trying to think of, I'm trying to visualize 3.5 acres in my head. The dog parks in, I know the closest one, like, did we look at dog parks nearby with the size of those? I know that, I saw it somewhere in the report.
Looking for the size, there's a variety of sizes of, of dog parks throughout the county.
Um, Councilwoman, did you have a?
Yeah, I have a couple of questions and I know also a history on what's going on with, with, with that site. I don't know if Ron is here today, but I know he's been in contact with the National Parks Services on how we could utilize this and, and we understand that it is a, you know, educational component. Also, this could be an opportunity to, to see, you know, with the, with the, the high schools here in Santa Ana, I know some of them are going in like into the trade schools, you know, so maybe some could go like veterinarian assistants, because I know that that's a, that's an upcoming profession for some of them. So, you know, so the, the ones who work at the veterinarian, the, like the back office or the, you know, the medical assistants, they, they could also utilize, I would say, part of that. Maybe once a, you know, once a month, we could put a component of educational component, you know, they can come and train the community on how to do whatever it is, you know, what Councilmember Penyalosa was saying, so we could have more informed dog ownership responsibility, sense of, you know, pride in, in Santa Ana too. And then also in Santa Ana, we, we do have our own shelter, right? Do we have a shelter for animal shelter here in Santa Ana?
We don't have that. We contract with the county for that.
Oh, we do?
Okay.
But I know that for like first time, you know, like how to spay, I mean, you guys send out information that, you know, individuals who are over the age of 50 or something like that get a discount if you have a pet and you spay them or something like that. I know that's part of the city services that we provide. So that also again would be an educational component that we could add to that. But I know Ron's here. I know you could, you could provide us, I know with Chris, we have been talking about this for the past three or four years on, you know, what could be done with the site and that was one of the things that when we spoke to, I think it was David or Michael or something like that from the National Park Services, they were open to this. So I don't know if you want to share what's going, I mean, a little bit of the history on that.
Yes, when I talked to David Singentaller in National Park Service, they were open in making the transfer back to recreational purposes only. We just have to take and make a process in doing that. And in answer to earlier question about the educational part of the facility, when, when the city went forward to decide to put in a fire training center, we understood the process to do that, but before we even started that process, we actually talked to the Department of Education if a fire training center would be acceptable, if it'd be turned back into educational purposes. And they said yes. So to answer a question whether a, a dog park with, with, with educational signage would be acceptable, we could talk to the Department of Education if that, that would be acceptable or not and, and if it is, then we, it's an easier process.
And, and not just the signage, but Councilwoman Elise, I mean, she, I didn't even think of that, the having, you know, once a month training for animals. I know in my own family, I have uncles throughout the city that they'll ask me, oh, my dog license bill came in, why is it 100 and whatever dollars? And I was like, oh, mine was 17 bucks. And they're like, why is it so little? It's because you're a councilmember and you're in the city. I was like, no, it's because I neutered my dog and it's, you know, it's, and he's like, I could never do that to my dog, that's cruelty. It's like, no, the fact that you're not neutering your animals is cruelty. So it, helping educate our community with, because everyone here loves pets, it's a big pet city, everyone has dogs and roosters and bunnies and cats and just having that, I mean, that's a, that could go a long way and really, we could, I haven't heard of that concept at other dog parks that I've been to in Orange County, but if we're going to do something with that, we could be pushed on that, on educating just responsible pet ownership.
All right.
If you could look into that, that would be great.
Councilwoman Solario?
Thank you, Mayor Protem, you guys. Couple of things, first, I think we're all anxious just to make it happen. I know there are some prior reports, but since when I was on the council the first time, we've been talking about a dog park and now we have the great staff to make it happen and resources through Measure X and otherwise and maybe some of these various requests that we need to make of the federal government, we could kind of do them all parallel. And maybe even before we can do the initial nice construction, maybe we could put out some bark or some other materials there and even start using it as early as the summer. I mean, it's, 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 it's our land and I do think we could do a lot of things that are, you know, educational, recreational and we just need to be creative just to make it happen. This community's been waiting a, a long time or maybe there's special events, just to showcase the opportunities or ask others for ideas. I know in the past, you know, we've done kind of similar things just to, you know, get people thinking about it, but long story short, as many of these things that we could do in a parallel way to fast track it, the better just because, you know, we've been waiting a long time.
Certainly, Councilmember, we'll research all the options and the suggestions that we've heard tonight and report back to you.
Fantastic. And then I like the park director's idea for park opportunities, dog park opportunities because it could be medium or small. In other parks, as part of the park master plan outreach that we should do, we should ask, you know, neighborhoods and folks around parks, you know, if they envision that for their communities, that's a good way to address the need that there is citywide because people want more than one. Thank you.
So it's the staff, thank you, staff. This is the, staff clear on the direction?
Yes.
All right, very good. Okay, we're going to move on to 75As public hearing.
Mr. Mayor, please.
Oh, yes. Counselor Penyalosa.
Just really quick, so was that item just a, a report and?
Discussion.
Get feedback and then we would come back and maybe?
Just a discussion item, correct.
So when, when would we see?
So the next steps would be to research the ideas that we heard tonight to see if that's even a possibility to?
Okay.
Add the educational component. The funding, in the staff report, there is an estimated cost of about 1.6 million for that, so more than likely we would need to do that through the budget process, starting with the next fiscal year.
And, and just maybe if we could find just also creative ways and I don't know if, if dog companies do sponsorships and where we could have their advertising up or name it, I'm just thinking Petco Park, I know that, I'm not saying Petco, but, you know, for, to, you know, maybe help out a little bit in the form of a donation in return for a sponsorship, not sure what that possibility is, but that's another idea, so, thank you.
75A, this is a time and place to open a public hearing to approve a disposition and development agreement with Thrive Santa Ana, Inc. and a 99-year ground lease for the development of a micro farm at 1901 West Walnut Avenue. City manager, is there a presentation of any type?
It's very brief. What the item is before you is it's two components, it's approving a DDA and then approving a ground lease. It's approving a DDA and then approving a ground lease. So as you may be aware, this is a piece of land that this nonprofit has been working very hard on to get a micro farm. It is quite a popular idea with the surrounding community. So what we're looking for is to enter into a one-year DDA where there will be certain performance requirements. And in the event that those performance requirements are all met, it would convert then to a 99-year ground lease. There would be termination provisions for the city should the micro farm be not capped up on that piece of property.
Very good. Is there any questions from the council members for the staff?
I have one question. Where are we right now with developing this micro farm with, I guess, the applicants or the proponents? Because I know this came before us last year, and, you know, we were supposed to be following, I guess, the timeline and maybe breaking ground or doing something. So where are we with that?
I'll ask Stephen Mendoza, if he can talk about the history. It was my understanding they've been trying to get it up and running for a couple of years, and you were giving them year extensions to do that. As to what, if they've started anything right now, if you could speak to that, Stephen?
I certainly can. If you remember, the council entered into an ENA, Exclusive Negotiation Agreement, which would bring us to this point. The ENA expires in about two weeks, so we want to make sure that we meet this deadline. It's a performance measure in the ENA to meet this deadline for a DDA.
Okay.
So us bringing the DDA to you with Luis Sarmanto of Thrive, they've signed it, they've agreed upon these terms. And so with your solidification of the, or approval of the agreement tonight, then they can move forward and have access to the property and begin their one-year period of, of meeting another milestone before this turns and evolves into a lease like the city manager said.
And why is it 99 years? Because I know I've seen other agreements that is less. Why is it 99 years?
Yeah, thanks, Luis. 99 was selected by them and us to have, they will have to secure other vendors for this site. They also may enter into borrowing and lending. And so they wanted the best terms possible for the longest period of time to solidify the site.
Okay. But there's terms and conditions if they're not met, then?
There, there certainly are. If you see, I believe it's a 55-page lease. Sonia Staff, Ryan Hodge worked diligently with Thrive to come up to a lease terms and DDAs that we can both move with, work with, and be defensible.
Okay, cool. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Stephen. Councilmember...
Thank you, Mr. Mayor Protem.
Sorry.
You're about to call me Vince, right?
I almost called you Vince.
That's fine. I answer that, too. So normally, these community land trusts are done in fee, from what I understand. So this is a way that the city continues to sort of make sure that milestones are met and, you know, and things are being completed. But what I was going to say, I know there's a stack of speaker cards. So to the extent that maybe there's consensus amongst the council, I know it's a busy night for everybody, and the last thing we want to do is keep everybody here. Sometimes when less is said, it's more, you know. But, you know, maybe we could take a straw poll unless there's something really compelling that, you know, this has been before us so many times that I think we've heard a lot of it. And this is just a one-year, Madam City Manager, so...
A one-year DDA that would convert to a 99-year lease.
I'll make a motion to approve.
All set.
We're not there yet, so we have to finish the...
Oh, yeah.
Go, go ahead, Councilmember Basera.
Thank you, Mr. Protem. I, I want to echo Councilmember Sarmanto's comments, and I appreciate staff's approach to this. I think it's a responsible approach. I mean, you know, giving folks the opportunity to take on city land and use it for the benefit of the community. I mean, everybody's got their own ideas of what those benefits are. I think this matches up to a lot of the goals that this council has. And I think that for us to be responsible in how we utilize this land, I think this is a great way to work. And hopefully, this becomes a model for other pieces like this that we could then work with other partners in the community to do. So, I mean, to, to the comments of my colleague, I think less comments are more, depending on what I think my other colleagues will say. But I think that there seems to be a good current of support at this point.
All right, very good. Does the Councilmember...
I would just say, I don't know if you guys feel that you guys want to share something. I would, I'd be okay hearing a couple of them, if that's what the will of, if they would want.
Yeah, we're going to make sure we have Luis come forward. I just wanted to, is the developer present?
Yes.
You want to come forward? You want to say?
Yeah, Mr. Sarmanto, sorry.
Okay, very good.
By the way, just for clarity, no relationship, although I thank you a lot, Luis. You know, we're brothers in arms, but not blood related.
That's correct. Thank you. Thank you for that, Councilmember. Yeah, thank you for, for the opportunity. This proposal, this DDA, is the result of a lot of hard work, both on the community's end and on the city's end, I might say. And thanking also the staff that have brought this along. It was about four years ago that the city decided to start looking into the community land trust model as a platform that allows the city to partner with community members and with developers. And this is just, you know, the, the first step in changing the way that we want to do development more and more in partnership with residents. And so I just want to name that. And also, we have something about 30, 30 or so letters of support from residents that we just gathered within the last week. And I'd like to submit those. And letters of support from organizations like Templo Calvario, Latino Health Access, the SAS Santana Active Streets Coalition, the City Fabric, which is a nonprofit architectural design company that helped us design the site in partnership with, with residents, and also Clu, Clergy and Lady United for Economic Justice. So thank you for this opportunity, and we really look forward to, to moving this forward. It's true, we need the council's approval today in order for this to be able to, to move forward. So thank you. And then we will be able to move on to acquire the entitlements and the, and the construction permits. Thank you.
Great. Thank you, Luis. Is there any members of the public? I know I have some cards here. You know, I, I think there's plenty of support for this project. But some members of the public that gave me a card, if you want to come forward, you can have three minutes. It's not, it's up to you. Okay, very good. Let me bring it back to the council. We'll hold on to these for the record. Councilmember Solorio?
Thank, thank you. I'm, I'm supportive of this effort. I know it's been a long time in the making. It's unfortunate it doesn't take this long, but it looks like a lot of good work's been done on, on, on both sides. And hopefully, again, like with the other program, to the extent we can advance it now that there's, you know, that it's at this stage with, with this level of, of support, that would be helpful. Also, I know staff in considering this project, I think appropriately so. We're essentially saying that because of earlier work, we didn't need to do the new surplus land act. And I think we should be, on a case-by-case basis, making those assessments. So this, you know, this, I think, seems fine and appropriate, given what we have taken action previously.
You're correct, Councilmember. They, we did have an effective ENA at the time period required to meet the SLA. So it was considered already taken care of before January 1 because of your existing ENA.
And I think there's a good case for that, and it's written up. I'm just saying, is there other similar projects? Let's look at them all and, case by case. Thank you.
Councilmember Basera?
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Protem. Question for staff. The speaker had mentioned entitlements for this project. Are there any entitlements required other than the execution of this DDA?
There, there will be a level of entitlements maybe for the, the layout of it, site plan review and site plan approval by the planning department.
Okay.
This, this gives them a year to do that and a year possible extension, and then it turns into a 99-year lease.
So the site plan review, though, would be primarily handled by staff? It wouldn't be something that needs to come back to a planning commissioner or council for review?
Yes, correct. It is, it's staff review.
Okay, great. And with that...
But it takes them a while to ramp up and have the site plans, and necessary to submit for that.
Of course, of course. Well, with that, I'd like to just go ahead and make a motion that we go ahead and authorize the city manager to execute a DDA with Thrive Santa Ana.
Okay, very good. I just thought there was a motion, I just wanted to...
There was, yeah, I actually captured it.
Yeah.
Oh, that's fine. I'll second, Councilmember Basera.
Very good. Is there a second? Who's the second?
Yeah, I'll second.
Oh. Penylosa, second. All those in favor, press green button. Very good. Excellent. All right. Congratulations, Thrive. 75B's, another hearing. This is time and place to open a public hearing to approve sales tax sharing agreement with Tac Energy. Does, does the staff have a presentation?
Mayor Protem, just some brief comments, and then we do have staff available for any questions that should come up. But this item before you is for a sales tax sharing agreement. We have the benefit of having a headquarters sales office located in Santa Ana. And in 2013, the city did enter into a sales tax sharing agreement with the company, which was at that time IPC. IPC in November of 2019 was purchased by Tac Energy. And Tac Energy approached the city and wanted to engage in the same sales tax sharing. And to do so, they committed to stay in a hard five years with considerations of committing their sales office here for 25 years. And that's the item before you tonight.
Okay, very good. Is there any questions for, from the council members for the staff? Councilmember Iglesias?
How many other businesses do we have this type of agreement with?
Sales tax sharing agreements with? Executive Director Stephen Mendoza will tell you the others that we have in place.
Yes, we currently have agreements with two.
Okay, and which one's the other one?
Volvo is the other one.
Uh-huh.
And IPC, which was the one that was under their previous name.
Okay. I know this was approved before I was on the council, but what, what's the, I mean, what's the requirement or what is the criteria for us to even enter in these type of agreements? Because I know there's other, other, I would say, businesses that would want the same type of opportunity. I mean, how do we choose what, who we do this type of agreements with?
Well, I am, again, the, the IPC agreement predated me. I'm not sure what generate, what we got into to generate that. But normally, economic development success takes three things. It takes tools, teams, and tactics. Sales tax agreement is a tool to retain businesses that create additional sales tax and revenue for the city for us to provide services therefrom. If you take an example of $10, the city would take in $10 and then provide $5 back. But we wouldn't, if we didn't do that agreement, we wouldn't have the $10 to begin with, if that makes sense.
Yeah, but, um...
We're giving...
Don't we have like bigger, like, say, like the grocery stores or like the big Walmart, whatever? I mean, I know they bring in a lot of sales tax, you know, into...
Grocery stores do not bring in a lot of sales tax, unfortunately. Most, most food that takes preparation is not taxed.
How about like, like the Walmarts, the Targets, the big...
Good sales tax producers, yes.
So, I mean, what is it that's preventing us? I'm not saying that we should, but I'm just saying, what is it that's preventing us from having these type of agreements with them, too?
Well, if Costco knocked on our door, I'll bet you the city manager would be bringing the same kind of offer to the council for that.
How do you get this? I mean, because it's, it just seems like we're giving tax breaks to just different individuals and not giving it across the board. Not that I think we should, but it's like, why?
Typically, you would enter into an economic assistance agreement when you're attempting to locate a significant sales tax producer to your city. And that would be like a national sales office, a headquarters of a business that not only produces substantial sales tax dollars, they also provide jobs, good-paying jobs for the community. So back in 2013, I pulled up the original agreement, and that is exactly what it was. The city council preceding you took the initiative so that they could relocate that company into our city, which we didn't have a company like that. We didn't have someone that produced that level of revenue that we could locate. So that's the reason for that economic assistance. With your retailers, oftentimes, you don't have to lure a retailer to a particular city because they like to locate based on the demographics and based on the sales volume. So it's, it's not someone that you would typically entertain in an economic assistance agreement. Costco is probably one of the exceptions. And there have been a lot of cities in Southern California that have done economic assistance because Coscos are significant tax generators.
Okay. So I, what you state here is like there's 30 jobs that this company creates in Santa Ana. How many are they, are they all Santa Ana residents, or?
We don't know that, but there's certainly businesses that, there are employees who have established a base here. And this firm wants to make sure that that, those employees stay in our city and also have the assurances of where their job will be located in future months. So what started off, as Christine said, what started off as a business attraction is now in the form of a business retention program. It's to retain these jobs and this business in our city.
Okay. And then this, as you said, is for five years that they're guaranteeing that they're going to stay?
They're committed for five years to stay. And then they have, the, the sales tax sharing revenue will go for 25 years. So we're hoping that the five years they're obligated to stay for, but with the additional economic assistance in the outline years, that they will commit to a full 25 years.
And what is their, their share of the sales tax that they bring into the city if they weren't, if they weren't to be here? What is, what's that amount?
The, the split is 50% up to 1.4 million, and then it would go to 70%.
I believe she's asking what, what's the sales tax that they generate?
In 2016, it was 890 a year was the total generated, $190,000 a year, which we gave half back. And then in 2019, it was 1.2 million.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Sarmanto?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor Protem. So I think I'm one of the few that was here in 2013, and, and the mayor was as well, and, and others. But this was a company, I guess, the predecessor to Tac Energy was IPC. Correct. And I think they were in Irvine, from what I remember. And Irvine couldn't work a deal out with them. But really, I guess what this is, none of the manufacturing is here, none of the footprint is here. It's just the point of sale that they moved to the city. So they, you know, if, if they're doing, what, 2.7 billion gallons of petrol, I think their, their business is oil, and they do $5 billion in revenue. Look, to the extent we could have more of those companies have their points of sale here in the city, and we recover that revenue, look, that's revenue that doesn't impact, have any secondary effects on our community. It's just the, the sales that are going through here. So it was one way to attract a business that was in a neighboring city that we could bring here without any of the secondary effects, right? So now, I mean, I certainly wanted to thank staff for being able to negotiate a longer deal with them because they could have moved to another city in, in the, in the deal that we had. And, you know, to the extent that others are available and they see that they could have their headquarters here in Santa Ana and have their manufacturing and all the other issues that they have refineries or something else someplace else, but all the transactions go through our city, and we recover the sales on, the, the sales tax on that. Look, that's a pretty good deal. From what I know, IPC was one of the 10 largest revenue generators for the, for the city.
Correct.
So, you know, without any of the bad effects, right? Because we do have some that do cause some effects and some challenges to the town. So I think that this is something I want to thank staff for negotiating a longer agreement with these folks and hopefully using this as a template or a model for others that want to move their headquarters here. It'd be great for Santa Ana to be known as a place where large, you know, Fortune 500 companies to have their headquarters here in, in the city. And I'm not sure if anybody from Tac Energy is here, but, you know, thank you all for coming and, you know, having faith and doing business in the city. That's what we want to do. We want to attract businesses, especially like these that don't have bad consequences to, to folks. And at the same time, I know that it was brought to us by a consultant that, you know, I, I think just proposed it and, and said, "Here's a, here's a company that's not happy with, you know, Irvine." And, you know, and they said, "Here, you know, Santa Ana is going to open, is going to welcome you with open arms, and we're supposed to be a business-friendly town." And this has certainly resulted in good consequences for us. So to the extent that, yeah, this can be used as a template, I certainly would encourage it. And, and I know that, you know, the consultant that brought, brought it to us was very helpful. And, and, you know, and staff for following up with this new successor, I guess. I'm not sure if it was purchased or if it was an assignment. But, yeah, it wouldn't, it wouldn't have happened without the predecessor company coming here first. Thank you.
It's a pleasure of the council.
I'll move the...
Is there a public hearing? Is there a public hearing element?
Yes, but there was no speaker cards. For the... Yes, but there was no speaker cards. For the record, there's no speaker cards. Sorry.
I just had a brief question, Stephen. I'm just, reading the staff report yesterday, I was a little confused on why it goes. I understand that the more, the higher the sales number, it goes from 50% to 70%, but it wasn't clear on who that gets the 70%. Is it they keep the 70% of the profits, or we get the 70% of the profits? Because the staff report was written so that it's very deceptive and doesn't clarify who ends up with that extra 20.
The more they produce, the more they get.
The more they keep.
Yeah.
And was, is that something that was off the table during negotiation? I would have just preferred to keep it at 50% regardless of what their number of sales is.
They were seeking the same terms as the company that they purchased had, and that was the terms that they had. And it's incentive for them to increase their sales at the location.
Okay. So, keeping it at 50% regardless of what the sales number is was never part of the conversation or a possibility?
What we did was we, like the city manager said, we mimicked the old agreement and gave them a new term to those same, we gave a new length of 25 years to the same terms that they had previously under IPC. That was our starting point, and that's what we agreed upon, and that's what we're bringing forward to you tonight. It offers an incentive for them to have more sales here. Remember, they just got purchased by someone else. IPC was purchased by someone else. Sales could go up, and we want those sales to happen in Santa Ana, not somewhere else. So, moving the sales staff to this office could, this could be an incentive for them to move more of their accounts to this office.
We did believe in the, in our initial meetings with them, is Tac Energy, after they acquired the company in November 2019, they were considering moving it out of Santa Ana. So, as Stephen had mentioned before, it was a business retention. I believe they're out of Texas.
Correct.
They're headquartered in Texas. So, they could have collapsed their national sales office to existing offices in Texas. We wanted to retain them here, and what they were seeking was simply the same terms as what the company that they acquired had in place with the city.
Any other questions from council members? If not, thank you, Stephen. Again, Councilmember Solorio brought up a quick point. Is there any speaker cards on this from the public, this public hearing?
No, there wasn't.
No C and no speakers, and there's no speaker cards. We're going to move to the council. What is the pleasure of the council?
Move the item.
Second.
All those in favor, press green on the button. Very good. We're going to move on to the next item, 85A. Councilmembers Iglesias and Penaosa, this is your item.
Yes. Thank you, Chris. Thank you for allowing me an opportunity to speak on this. And I feel this item goes directly to the, what we've been trying as a council to address, which is the homeless, the transient issue that we have here in Santa Ana. And a lot of it stems from legislation that comes up, you know, comes down from Sacramento, which is Prop 47, Prop 57, AB 109. And one of the things that I would ask my colleagues here and, you know, the council is to see if we can support legislators up in Sacramento who want to amend these laws that have, that are, you know, that are affecting our way of doing business here, here in our city. And one of the things that, in speaking to the city manager, I know there's legislators up in Sacramento that would want to amend, I believe it's AB 109. And that is our assembly member who represents like the west end of Santa Ana, which is Tyler Deep right now, he has introduced a bill that would amend the, I guess, the shoplifting and like the consequences for the individuals who are, who are, you know, in this lifestyle. Because right now, it just makes it so easy for them just to go in and just, you know, with their calculators, they go and say, okay, it's not more than 950. We know we're not going to be, I guess, held, I guess, responsible in a way because the law protects us. So, I would like if you could, Madam City Manager, read what's before the state legislatures right now with what Assemblymember Tyler Deep has introduced.
Certainly. So, Councilmember, he introduced AB 3131, and it's basically a modification of Prop 47, exactly as you mentioned, which is to adjust shoplifting provisions. It is expected to be here heard in the Assembly Public Safety Committee in late March. So, there is plenty of time before that bill is considered to the committee, should we wish to take a support position on it.
So, if it's a pleasure of the council-- So, if it's a pleasure of the council, I'm hoping if we can send a letter of support for this committee. And also, if we could send it all to our, the state legislators, like letters, letting them know that we're in support of something like this. Because I read also an article, and I think it's on the, I wish the chief was here, the, I think it's the Chief of Police, the Association of Chief of Police. One of the things that they've mentioned, too, is, you know, it's very hard for them to do their jobs because these, these, you know, propositions and this AB 109 kind of ties their hands on doing what they have to do. And if we could also support them, that'd be awesome. And I know you had mentioned to Madam City Manager, there's something to, I believe, I don't know if it's in 2020, November, that we're going to be having something?
Yes. So, the, since the items were created, let me say, they were voter-approved initiatives. So, the legislature can only modify them. It would take an initiative to actually repeal them, and that was one of your discussion items on there. And such an initiative effort was taken in 2018, and the Secretary of State did certify that they had the appropriate numbers of signatures. It's coined the Reducing Crime and Keeping California Safe Act, and it will be on the ballot in November 2020 for the voters to decide.
Awesome. So, I'm wondering if as a city, you know, as a council, we could add our names to that, you know, to support something like that? Because I think it would definitely help us with what's going on here, especially with the transients and, you know, the drug and criminal issues that are happening here in our city. And definitely, it's going to increase our quality of life here in Santa Ana. So, I want to thank Councilmember Penaosa for being, you know, I would say, co-sponsor on this item, you know. And I don't know if you have anything to share?
Yeah, I just wanted to thank you as well for bringing this forward. Something that's, you know, a lot of propositions and bills that were initially at the draft, I wasn't there, but I'm assuming, you know, the thought behind it was good. And now, these unintended consequences that we see on our streets every single day throughout the state is very problematic for the safety and well-being of our community. I'll keep it very short, but, you know, it's something that I'm supportive of, to send letters in support to these different committees that are trying to repeal these propositions and the assembly bills. Because, you know, it's just, over the weekend, on a ride-along, you know, we had, I was just seeing things, you know, a woman pulled over with all kinds of paraphernalia and money and, I mean, thousands of dollars in cash and stolen merchandise and everything under the sun. And she walked away from the scene with a ticket. And these are things where it's like, how can we have a safe community when these, when people that are now out on our streets that could be or should be in prison? It's affecting our community, and that's why we see the homeless problem out of control. And I'm supportive of this, so thank you.
Councilmember Basara?
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor Protem. I appreciate my colleagues for bringing this forward, and I do see the negative impacts that Props 47, 57, and AB 109 have had on our community. With that being said, you know, it is, as the city manager pointed out, we do have an item that did not qualify in time to make it onto the November 2018 ballot, but will be on the November 2020 ballot. And I personally support that initiative, and I hope that we all collectively will as well. With that being said, I know that there's going to be efforts by individual legislators, and as those come forward and we have more information on them, I'm happy to support them. But, you know, knowing that this particular November ballot initiative is out there, I think that's definitely something that we should be focused on if we're going to put forth efforts to really kind of push back on the negative impacts of Props 47, 57, and AB 109.
Thank you, Councilmember Basara. Any other, Councilmember Solorio?
Yes, thank you. It's great to have a discussion on this. I think there's a lot of correct information out there about, you know, some of these initiatives. There's misinformation out there. But I think, as was said, there is now an initiative coming up that's going to address some of the needed fixes now that some time has passed. But interestingly enough, the reason why it's, the initiative is because in the legislature, there isn't too much support for taking it, you know, in that direction. At the national level, we'll even see and are seeing that President Trump has been addressing some of these criminal justice reform items. Because I think for many, that one of the ideas is for low-level, non-serious, non-sexual predator, you know, type of individuals that maybe serving at the counties better than serving at the state, as well as there are resources now that the county does receive and the sheriffs for addressing this. And then finally, you know, on the homeless thing, yeah, sure, some may have a relation with some of these initiatives. The majority don't and/or the data isn't there. But on the whole, if you just look at crime, the reality is, since then, since all these items passed, crime in most cities, including Santa Ana, is down. You know, if you go to the city's PD page, you'll see that with the exception of, you know, some theft crimes, that all the, all other, you know, FBI, UCR, crime data items, things are down. So, you know, we can't say that, you know, all crimes are up and everything across the board is up because of these items. But I'm glad there's a lot of support for this initiative that I do support as well, that Senator Cooper is putting forward. So, that is fantastic. Thank you.
There's no more comments. I'll give my quick comment on this. So, AB 109, to me, I thought was a big old mistake. It's also known as a realignment, so they could reduce the overcrowding in state prisons, and they were going to put them in the county. The probation, they were going to use these prisoners, move them over to the county jurisdiction and have probation, monitor them. And that's why probation has the task force on AB 109. Many of them were out here in the civic center when I was working here. Probation officers were going out, and I would ask them, why are you guys out here? You know, why is the task force out here in the civic center? It goes, well, a lot of our AB 109ers are homeless, and they're out here in the street. You know, the, and so I went digging, and why is this population causing such a big problem if they're low-level offenses when they're being released? What the state was doing is that they were looking at the last commitment offense that they had. So, they have a long history. Let's say a person has a long history of crime, you know, committing all kinds of, you know, havoc out there, and then they get arrested on something that's minor. They go to jail because they got a long history. That person won't qualify to be out because that commitment offense that they lasted, that the recent one, was low. But they weren't taking into account the rest. So, they were letting a lot of these bad guys out. And so, when they call them, we call them non-non-nons, non-violent, non-serious, non-sexual offenders, didn't matter. There was a lot of problems. Along with this, the Prop 47, 57, those were not great ideas. And then with the state, you know, making their changes on the marijuana laws, I don't think it's helping our youth. But those are my comments. I'm glad my colleagues brought this up, and we need to change. And our police officers out there, they know exactly who they're dealing with, and they know that this population is out there and is causing a lot of problems. So, with that, I think that the staff has a clear direction on where we want to go. And thank you very much. We'll close that item. We're going to move on to the public comments. I have--
Yeah, we have, sorry. 85B, discussing, considered--
Oh, my mistake.
Yeah. Discussing, considered, directing the city manager to return the city council with options. This was for coronavirus update. I know that the city of Costa Mesa has been fighting on behalf of the county to have any coronavirus patients placed there. I know there's been updates since. I basically just brought this forward because I think it's important that we have somebody that's paying attention and watching very closely on our staff to see what's happening. Because knowing how things usually happen in the county, you know, they're going to want to place them at the California building across the street. And that's, you know, I could just foresee something like that happening. So, I just wanted to make sure that we're staying vigilant on top of this and send a letter of support to the city of Costa Mesa in keeping, I mean, we were neighbors with the city of Costa Mesa. We shop in the city of Costa Mesa and vice versa. I mean, we're so close and share a huge shopping center. So, it's important that we let them know that we're supportive of their efforts in keeping Orange County safe. And that was basically it, unless there was anything else from my colleagues that they wanted to chime in on.
Councilmember Samyantum?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor Protem, and thank you, Councilmember, for putting this on here. I know it's sort of a moot point at this, at this moment, but I think it gives us an opportunity to talk about, look, had the county and the city of Costa Mesa agreed to make it a shelter, they wouldn't even be in this mess, right? So, maybe that's a good way for them to pivot and consider that in case you want to, in case the federal government wants to revisit this at some point. But I do think it brings up the point where there's a lot of information and misinformation and paranoia. Maybe there's a way that staff can work with the CDC or, you know, a responsible agency to put up some FAQs on the, you know, on our website, just given this virus and, obviously, the information that's been out there, some accurate, you know, ways to address it. You know, I mean, the obvious is obviously making sure that we wash our hands and we fist bump a little bit more. But I think more than anything, to the extent that it's available in multi-language, in Spanish and Vietnamese, so folks can just easily access that. But it is a little unsettling when you hear so much in the press, and sometimes the press is a little irresponsible when they, you know, message on these things. A lot of it is to create, you know, just, again, an anxiousness. And you see that with children. You see that with families that really don't understand what's happening. They just think that they're being overwhelmed by a plague. And so, if we can provide a responsible source of good information that's accurate, I think that's helpful. So, thank you.
Thank you very much. Anyone else? Okay, we're going to move on to the public comments. My first card that I have here is Donna Carranza, followed by Kathleen Bagley. Donna here. Followed by Kathleen, followed by Heidi, followed by Lily. Welcome.
Sorry about my entire, my teeth are on their way.
No worries.
Just want to excuse that. This is actually what I'm addressing about. I volunteer at the MHTA Multi-Service Center in the city of Santa Ana. Seventeen years ago, I walked in there as a client. And I just wanted to let the city council know and everything that our organization has helped me a lot. It's not, it's a place that we go when we need, when we're afraid. I walked in there 17 years ago, and this Saturday, I just took my 17 years clean off of drugs and everything, thanks to this organization. I've been living in my place of residence for five years, thanks to this organization. And they're not really done with me either. I've been able to volunteer there for the last 17 years, off and on. And I help run a thrift store in the back of their facility, and one of our biggest goals is that we help the homeless. And that is, a lot of them come in there with no clothes. They don't have a shirt on the back. If they need something, we give it to them. Thanks to these people, I am a graduate of their organization. But if I'm in still dire need, or if I need someone to talk to, if I need to get information, I can still go to them, and they'll take care of me. Would you have our problems? I'll be the first to admit that. I think a lot of places have problems. Oh, man. How do I say? It kind of breaks my heart because lately, we've been cut off from serving food there. And I don't mean to get really good off the subject and stuff, but we used to be able to serve three meals a day there to clients. And now, since they dropped out the food, I was going across, on the way to McDonald's this morning, I'm getting off-- across, on the way to McDonald's this morning, I'm getting off subject, but I saw a couple clients in the trash trying to get food out. And it kind of breaks my heart what happens to a lot of the people there. They're actually allowed to get, we have a medical truck that comes that will help keep people get their medication when they need it. I was one of these people that, when I first got there, I got off my meds. I, oh, I'm bipolar. I have other little issues, you know, but thanks to them, I'm doing better today. And I see clients come in there every single day, every single day, that they don't know what they're going to do tomorrow. They have no idea where they're going to sleep tomorrow, where they're going to be tomorrow, how they're going to get a meal tomorrow. But at least for a few hours a day, they have a place to come, and they feel safe. And that's another thing I want to specify, we're safe there. This is someplace that we don't have to worry about anybody passing judgment on us. And that's all I really got to say.
Thank you, Donna. Thank you very much. Kathleen? Is it Bagley or Bagley?
Bagley.
Bagley? So, who's Donna, then?
I'm Donna.
You're Donna. Very good. Okay, got it. That was the first name I called. Go ahead, Donna. Thank you.
I also speak about MHA. I'm a client there. I've been going there since 2012.
I'm speaking to Mike.
I'm a client--
There you go. Pull the mic down. Yeah, there you go. Perfect. Thank you.
Okay, I'm an MHA client.
That way, everybody can hear you. That way, everyone can hear you.
I've been going there since 2012. They've helped me. I have a place to eat. I have a place to shower, bathroom. I have resources there to help with getting, you know, where to go for mental health, you know, where to go, doctor's appointments, things like that. I have a son who was homeless some years ago. They helped him, referred him, got him off the drugs he was on, and he's actually living in Ohio. He's been working for a number of years. He runs one of their veteran pizza places. So, he's done real good. They helped him. And as Kathy said, it's a safe area. Not all homeless people are on drugs, although I will say a majority seems to be, you know, are alcoholics. The MHA is a resource center also. They have a veterans department. Veterans come in. They have a housing department. You know, they have an employment department. So, they do do a lot of things. They help people get linked with mental health counseling. If they need a ride to there, they transport them. They do a lot of good, but not everybody out there homeless can go in there. It is a mental health facility. To qualify to go in there, you have to be a homeless person. You have to be, have a mental diagnosis and be receiving care, you know, on your medication, be seeing a psychiatrist, and you have to be eighteen or older. So, you know, there are restrictions, not just everybody can go in there. They have a list of rules. You break the rules, you're exited, which happens with a lot of people, because they think they can go in there, do what they want. You know, we're not allowed to take food outside. Well, now, we're not getting the food to take out, but, you know, before that, no food outside, don't feed people, other people that are out there in the street. People don't follow the rules because they think they don't have to, they get exited. I mean, they're strict, but they're fair rules. It's real simple. You want to eat, you want to shower, you want to wash your clothes, you want to be able to have, you know, a bathroom you can use. It's very simple. The rules are simple. You know, I really don't know what I'd do without MHA there. They've helped me a lot. My issue is, I do have an income, but I need help with housing. I need permanent help. I can't, I have, I'm physically disabled. I also suffer from PTSD, which actually, they have groups for that there. So, it's kind of, I can't go in someplace, be in a shelter with a bunch of people, and I'm waiting for my permanent housing, and they have been really working with me on this, so.
Understood. Thank you very, very much, Donna. I appreciate it. Kathleen, congratulations on your sobriety. Next speaker is Heidi Toya.
Do you mind if I go before her?
Sure.
Mayor Protem, Lily Graham.
I got Lily?
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you. I have some letters that we submitted for the city council. I just made some additional copies for everyone. Evening, Mayor Protem, city council members. My name is Lily Graham. I'm an attorney with Disability Rights California. We're federally and state mandate California's Protection Advocacy Agency. We represent the interests of individuals with disabilities in the state of California. We aim to lead for self-determination, live in least restrictive environment for our clients, support community-based services to ensure equal opportunity. MHA OC represents or allows homeless individuals with disabilities, bring them in as its members, and provides valuable resources. It helps treat their disabilities, allows them to maintain their disabilities, and provide services that are life-sustaining needs. We have concerns about the lawsuit that the city of Santa Ana has filed against MHA OC. Our individual clients are affected. We have a number of clients who are extremely stressed out. They have no other options but the services at MHA OC in order to obtain these services. I think we're concerned about kind of the wide brush that homeless individuals are painted under. On your own website and our clients, people find themselves homeless because they lose a job, they're fleeing domestic violence, there's not enough affordable housing in the city. They are working, but their wages are not living wages, and some have substance abuse issues that they're working on, and some have mental illness. The service provided at MHA OC are essential services, mental health treatment services, therapy, group support, but also life-sustaining services that they are not able to obtain anywhere else. And for some of us, seems just everyday essential items, ability to do laundry, accessible bathrooms. They are able to store their property, not have to carry everything that they own with them wherever they go. They're safe, they have a community, and they have people that help support and manage their disabilities. Santa Ana has a number of homeless programs. They have outreaches, service and programs that emphasize the need to treat and help homeless individuals with mental illness and severe mental illness. We believe this lawsuit violates the ADA, due process. There was not ample opportunity, there was no conversation between MHA or the individuals that utilize the services MHA OC to accommodate any type of accommodation that could make, to address the concerns of Santa Ana, but also provide the necessary services for the individuals. So, we're asking the city of Santa Ana to dismiss the lawsuit, work with individuals at, the individuals at MHA OC, work with MHA OC to keep this valuable resource. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Last speaker is Heidi. Toya?
Hoya.
Hoya. Can't see it written a little different.
So, good evening, Mayor Boleto and council members. My name is Heidi Hoya, and I'm also an attorney with Disability Rights California. Similar as Ms. Graham, we just have very deep concerns that in attempting to shut down the Mental Health Association South Main Street site, the city is also in violation of not only the ADA Title II, but also of the Welfare in Institutions Code 5120. You may or may not know or be familiar with this, but there's been a longstanding history of people with disabilities being segregated, been placed in facilities, and just involuntarily committed in mental health facilities for a very long time. But through the Landman-Petras Short Act of 1972, the legislature sought to end these involuntary commitments and ensure that people with disabilities could actually receive mental health treatment and services in the least restrictive setting and in local communities. As such, they enacted Welfare in Institutions Code 5120, which prevents cities from discriminating in the enactment of zoning laws between the use of property for the psychiatric care and treatment of patients and use of property for general hospitals or nursing homes. Unfortunately, the city is doing exactly what the Landman-Petras Short Act and WIC 5120 sought to eradicate by claiming that the South Main Street site is just a multi-service center and can't operate in a C2 zone per, as the Santa Ana Municipal Code. But the South Main Street site, as Ms. Kathy Paolo and Ms. Donna Carranza just expressed, is more than that. It's a property used for the psychiatric care and treatment of people with mental health disabilities. And as mentioned, they provide a wider array of services, like group therapy, medication services, referrals, and just pretty much anything that will help a person with a mental health disability succeed and thrive in the community. You know, as such, it is in par with hospitals, sanitariums, and clinics, which are currently permitted in C1 and thus C2 zones in the city of Santa Ana and where the site is currently located. As such, we ask that the city continue to allow people with disabilities to seek mental health treatment in their local communities by keeping the South Main Street site open. Thank you.
Thank you very much. So, Madam Clerk, do we have any more speaker cards?
We do not.
We do not have any more speaker cards? Okay, I'm going to close the public comment portion. We are going to address the excused absence of the mayor. Do we have a--
I'll move it.
Yes, we're opening the Housing Authority meeting.
Okay, we'll open the house.
Or the, yeah, you're recessing council meeting and convening to the Housing Authority.
Very good. We're going to recess the--
City council--
The council meeting.
Yes, city council meeting and convening to the--
Okay, very good. And we have a special meeting from February 18th. We need to approve the minutes.
So moved.
Second.
Those in favor, press green.
Does that include also the excused absences?
Very good. This also excuses the absence--
Yes, my motion includes the entire consent calendar.
Thank you very much. Okay, that passes. We are now going to close the Housing Authority meeting, and we are going to continue with the comments section.
Yes.
And Madam Clerk, you have comments this evening?
No, that was all I have.
That's all you had? Okay, very good. And the, we're going to move on to the city manager comments.
Yes, Mayor Protem, just three items. Since it's the first meeting of the month, I give my homeless update for you. So, some good news. The fencing encroachment permit has been issued by Caltrans for Santiago Creek, and in preparation, the overgrown vegetation in the area will be cleared out as part of the Day of Good Deeds on Saturday, March 28th. Throughout the month of February, the quality of life teams contacted 484 homeless individuals throughout the city. 207 were from Santa Ana, and 35 individuals accepted shelter. The police department cited 185 individuals and made 233 arrests. City staff has identified some hotspots and is working with CityNet to perform a concentrated outreach effort in those areas, and the city's homeless interdepartmental team will be conducting two more business outreach presentations to Poli Pies on March 5th and downtown Santa Ana on March 31st. And on February 5th and February 19th, multiple city agencies, including Public Works Maintenance Services, the Police Department, Parks and Rec, city contractors, OC Healthcare Agency, conducted coordinated and large-scale cleanup efforts and outreach in the Santiago Creek, removing over 23 tons of trash, debris, mattresses, bike parks, scrap, shopping carts, and hypodermic needles while cleaning and abating approximately 1,000 square feet of shrubbery and vegetation, which was being used as a shelter. The second item is just to remind everybody of the Boca de Ora event that's being held on Saturday, March 7th, from 12:00 noon to 7:00 PM, and it's in the downtown area, and we're expecting about 7,000 people to attend that. And then also the Day of Good Deeds, our annual Day of Good Deeds event will take place on Saturday, March 28th, from 9:00 AM to 12:00 PM. It's an annual neighborhood initiative, graffiti paintout, beautification project throughout the city, and if you're interested in volunteering, you can contact our Neighborhood Initiatives Division at 714-667-2260, and that's all.
Thank you, Madam City Manager. We're going to go ahead and continue with councilmember comments. Councilmember Becerra?
Thank you, Mayor Protem. I just want to take this opportunity to invite the community to come to my community office hours this Saturday, March 7th, down at South Coast Global Medical Center on South Bristol at 10:00 AM. I hope to see you all there. We had a very productive discussion last month regarding some of the issues, such as what the city manager just mentioned in regards to the homeless and other things impacting our community, so looking forward to seeing you there, and on that note, have a good evening.
Councilmember Vence Sarmiento?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor Protem. I hope everybody went out to vote tonight. It was an important night. It looks like results are still trickling in, so it'll be a long night. I did want to just thank staff because I know that, and the council members here that put, proposed the memorial for us to see the memorial for Kobe Bryant and the other eight folks who passed away. Obviously, it was important to have us gather. We've celebrated together. We also mourned together, so it was a very nice turnout here. I think people wanted to grieve as a community, and I know we were able to do that. That was important. But one of the things I wanted to call attention to tonight was something that was unfortunate that I heard over the weekend and just recently as well, was some voter suppression efforts, voter intimidation efforts. I know that specifically at the Mexican consulate's office here in Santa Ana, I know that there was some very ugly anti-immigrant messages and threats made to them. So, to the extent our police officers, our police department can investigate a little bit further, that's right in town, right on Fourth Street, that was one. And over the weekend, in the neighboring city of Orange, the Democratic Party of Orange County office was also vandalized by some white nationalist messages, which is very unfortunate, because we saw these, you know, very close to the election cycle and very close to tonight's election night. So, those things are not good things as we, as we move along as a society, and especially a society that's supposed to be open and free of these voter intimidation and suppression and just hate, you know, and that's what it is, unfortunately. So, to the extent that we can be more assertive in our way that we approach those, those bad actors here in the city, I certainly would appreciate it. I think there's no place for any of that here, especially at a time when we're trying to encourage people to get out and vote and be more engaged in their civic responsibilities. So, with that, I will say good night, and hopefully, everybody voted.
Councilmember Penyalosa?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor Protem. Just wanted to announce that I will be traveling tomorrow to the city of Sacramento with the League of California Cities to focus on, it's the Academy for Planning and Building, which is an area where, you know, I could always use the education, so I'm excited for that, and that would be tomorrow through Friday. I noticed it wasn't on the agenda as reportable. Is it supposed to be on the next agenda, or is it? Oh, okay, so I'll announce it then, too. But just again, just want to thank staff for what Councilmember Sarmiento said, the memorial, you guys did a great job putting that together. Right along, I know PD had a busy weekend, so thank you guys for being out there, keeping our community safe, and that's it.
Councilmember Iglesias?
Just want to thank staff for providing me the information when I asked you guys. I know that you guys are very busy, but just thank you for taking the time to answer my questions, city manager and city attorney also. Thank you. And if you guys are men and women of faith, keep praying. I know Santa Ana will survive a lot of the things that are coming our way, but just, you know, it's time for us to unite and just pray for each other, so I keep you guys in prayer, so I'm hoping the same. Also, thank you for allowing me an opportunity to recognize the NAACP. I think they're a very good organization that does a lot of good things for our community. And I'm hoping that in the future, I know right now they moved their Juneteenth celebration to Anaheim. I'm hoping for them to bring it back to Santa Ana. So, if that's something that could be on your things to reach out to them and how we can help them out with that. You know, we do Fiesta Patrias, we do Cinco de Mayo. So, Juneteenth is a very important celebration for their community, so if there's something that we could do to make it, you know, seamless or an easier process for them to do their celebrations here, that'd be greatly appreciated. And I think next time we meet each other, make sure you guys wear your green. I think it's going to be St. Patrick's Day, May 7th, March 17th, right? So--
Watch your tongue.
I know, right? You want to pinch him?
Watch your tongue.
Yeah. So with that said, have a great evening.
I want to thank everyone for joining us this evening, and before we go, I just want to thank the Santa Ana police officers for their quick response to the tragedy that happened over at Immaculate Heart of Mary. It was a very, very sensitive situation, very, well, I just want to thank the officers for protecting the public. It could have been a lot more casualties, and I know it's still in the investigative stages, but I just want to thank them for their quick response and for keeping everyone safe. And with that, I want to thank everyone and have a good evening. Meeting adjourned.